We'll get started. In accordance with the open public meetings, Act 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Rarsini, Councilman in Barson, and Mustafa Mansouri asked to be excused from this evening.
Okay.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Sammy Siobhan? And Chairman Rarsini?
Here. And by the way, Charles did tell me he was out of town this time in business, so he has a legit excuse. Okay, so the minutes for the regular meeting of July 13th, 2022, these Christine emailed to you, so I recall that last time Ted had some minor corrections.
They were made.
They were made, and so I would move to approve.
I could see that they had been.
Of course.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Ed Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Rarsini.
Yes. Single resolution for today's Duke Royalty Limited Partnership, PLN 22-00002. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Rarsini.
Yes. So just some notes before we go into the public comments, the general public comments. The one hearing tonight for Puleo International Incorporated, PLN 22-00006, is carried to October 19th, 2022. No further notification needed. So if you're here for that hearing, it will be heard instead on October 19th, and this is your notice of that fact. With that being said, I move to open the meeting to the public for general planning comments. If you are here and would like to make a comment or ask a question regarding BH31 Schoolhouse Road, please wait until we hear that application, which we'll open to the public for comment on that application specifically.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to ask that if there are any comments, just in the interest of time and getting everybody heard, that we limit to three minutes per speaker for the general. Seeing no one coming forward, however, I would move to close the public portion. Do we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public portion is closed. So we move on to our single hearing tonight for BH31 Schoolhouse Road LLC, Planet, PLN 22-00010.
Peter Lanford, Boris Golden, Foley appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application on behalf of BH31 Schoolhouse Road for site plan approval to construct a warehouse at 31 Schoolhouse, consisting of 74,800 square feet. As part of this application, there are two variances that we will be seeking. I will have my professionals review those variances with you and the justifications for them. Other than that, the application is fairly straightforward. We meet all of the other bulk requirements of the BI zone. For the public, I do have four witnesses, so they can direct their questions to the appropriate witness. I have Mr. Seawald, who is our site engineer, Mr. Chase, who is our traffic engineer, Mr. Ledbader, who is our architect, and Mr. O'Brien, who is our planner. Having settled over that, I will start with the testimony of Mr. Seawald.
Raise your right hand. Some, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you got.
I do.
Name and business address for the record, please.
Certainly. Josh Seawald from Dynamic Engineering Consultants, business address 1904 Main Street, 07719 Lake Como, New Jersey.
Mr. Seawald, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And very briefly, can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Certainly. I have a bachelor's and a master's of science in civil engineering. I've testified, have been accepted before over 100 land use boards in the state of New Jersey, and I'm a partner at Dynamic Engineering Consultants.
Thank you. Peter, he's accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Seawald, you will be relying on certain exhibits which will be displayed on the screens this evening?
That's correct.
And are all of those exhibits part of the plan set that we submitted in conjunction with the application, or will there be some additional exhibits?
There may be some additional exhibits.
Okay. So if you are referring to an exhibit that's part of the plan set, just mention that because it doesn't have to be marked, and if it's something that's not in the plan set, we will have it marked. First of all, can you describe the subject property and its surrounding land uses?
Absolutely. So the exhibit that you have before you on the screen is a colorized aerial map. It is part of the record civil drawing that's part of the package in front of you this evening. The property is outlined in a bold yellow line. The dotted yellow line around it is approximately the 200-foot property owner's list. Orientation of the overall property to the left side of the screen is north, to the right side of the screen is south, and Schoolhouse Road here runs in an east-west direction. As you could see from the outline of the property, it is partially developed today. It is approximately 5.2 acres with 300 feet of frontage along Schoolhouse Road. Out there today, there's two buildings. There is a commercial building located towards the front of Schoolhouse Road with some supplemental loading and parking spaces. In the rear, there is a, what appears to be, a residential building as well. We do have some undeveloped areas consisting of woods located to the north and east side. As Mr. Lanford summarized and introduced the property, we are located within the BI business industrial zone. And as you could see from this map, we have dropped in the Franklin Township zoning map, and we are surrounded by all of our neighbors within the BI zone.
And the surrounding land uses within the BI zone are either manufacturing or warehousing?
That's correct, and some supplemental office as well.
Thank you. And you indicated right now that there is an existing commercial building as well as a residence, correct?
That's correct. The existing commercial building, we'll call it light manufacturing, they process valves for various aspects and apparatuses. They're called bolga associates. So light manufacturing, not a ton of, I would say, exterior activity, everything is inside.
Okay. Now, can you indicate to the board what we are proposing with this application?
Certainly. And we will come here to our new exhibit. Mr. Clarkin, this is the site plan overlaid onto the landscape plan colored for presentation purposes. All the data here is in the record drawings, but this is not part of the record set.
Let's mark it A1. Was it prepared either by you or under your direction?
That is correct.
Fine. A1, please. And I assume for the township's file, you'll want a copy of that, so we'll send you a paper copy.
Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So same orientation, just more zoomed in so you can see the full property up close. To the left side of the screen is to the north, on the right side is to the south. Schoolhouse Road, as you could see, is running in the east-west direction. Starting in the middle of the property, the orange block is the associated proposed warehouse building, 74,800 square feet. We have 38 parking spaces up front on the southern short side of the building along Schoolhouse Road. We also have two proposed driveways currently, one on the eastern and western side of the property. In the rear portion, so the northern rear property line, we have 10 loading docks with two drive-in ramps and full circulation around the building. As Mr. Lanford summarized very well in the beginning, we are compliant with the majority of the BI bulk standards, meaning the front, side, rear yard setback requirements. We comply with building height and parking as well as loading facilities. The two variances that we'll get into shortly are more associated with slight deviation in impervious coverage, as well as the loading dock width, which I believe this board has heard from time to time throughout various warehouse applications. Overall, this is a scrape and rebuild. We are knocking down the existing commercial building and supplemental residential in the back, providing all brand-new utilities from Schoolhouse Road into the site to service our building, sanitary sewer, water, of course, fire, and domestic gas and electric. Landscaping has been spread sporadically throughout the property, 46 overall new trees, over 400 shrubs, and the reason for the very large amount of shrubs is we do have a proposed bio-retention basin on site, and the BNP requires us to have over 80% planting within those areas. Lighting, very traditional, 20 to 25 feet tall, LED poles spread throughout the parking area for safe illumination of the drive aisles, parking areas, and loading docks. And a little bit on stormwater like we discussed out there today, there is no stormwater on the property today, so the runoff that comes from the existing buildings and pavement just kind of meanders its way off the site into Schoolhouse Road into the north. After the proposed development will be constructed, we'll have two above-ground and walled bio-retention basins. You can see those heavily planted areas on the south side in between the Schoolhouse Road and the parking lot, and the second will be in the north after the truck court area and the northern property line. A third basin will also be underground, and that will be considered the underground infiltration area. Before we get into some of the review letters or some other comments, Mr. Lanford, I would like to advise that there were some comments by Mr. Healy to increase the landscaping on site, and we'd like to open with, we will certainly work with him on that. Those additional areas are really focused, I would say, on the east and west side property lines to add some additional trees and buffering. Our neighbors are, you know, commercial and office buildings, but in order to better enhance the site, the aesthetics, and comply with some of your standards, we are going to agree to have our landscape architect work with Mr. Healy on that.
Okay, couple quick questions before we go into the report.
Please.
How is refuse being handled?
Traditional speculative warehouse. We don't have a site-specific trash enclosure. What will happen when we get a user, they'll most likely be handled internally, or there will be a compactor located within one of the truck court areas.
Okay, so there will be not a designated, at this time, a designated refuse storage area?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, also, did we provide, as now has been requested by this board, any sidewalks along Schoolhouse Road?
We did.
And so we have full frontage sidewalk?
Full frontage sidewalk.
Okay. Are there any connections on the site plan between the building and/or parking areas to the sidewalk?
Not at this time due to significant topographic changes. We would be willing to work with your professionals. Basically, we could provide stairs, concrete stairs, from the sidewalk up to the parking lot. If it needed to be ADA accessible, we'd have quite a significant switchback ramp system on the frontage. I don't know how aesthetically pleasing that would look, but we wanted the board to know that the applicant would be happy to condition any approval on installing either one of those measures. The plans currently just show sidewalk along the frontage with no formal connection into those 38 parking spaces.
Okay. And just for the record, with respect to the circulation as you're now proposing it, how would all of the circulation work on site?
So, we made this application a few months ago. It started with an over 90,000-square-foot building. We had some multiple TRCs with your professionals. They were concerned about some overall layout in the building, so we reduced from 90,000 down to 74,000 and changed. In addition with that, they were getting some advice from the fire marshal to provide full circulation around the building, which you can see that's located on A1, the site plan rendering. So right now, the site is proposed that you can have employees, tractor-trailers, and a fire truck circulate in any direction to a circulation. One of the board engineers' comments was actually requesting the eastern driveway, so the top driveway on the plan, be restricted to just cars, and then the western, the bottom driveway, just be proposed for trucks, which we would certainly be able to agree with. What that's going to do is shrink that eastern driveway up a little bit and force truck traffic just to utilize that western access aisle and the loading dock area, essentially making the eastern drive aisle a little useless for us because our customers, or I should say our employees, are not going to use that rear access aisle to get to the truck court.
Okay, now with respect to the variances that we are seeking, we are seeking a coverage variance?
That is correct.
And what is the percentage of impervious coverage that we are proposing?
Approximately 66%, and in the BI, 60% is allowed.
Okay. And the second variance is the width of the truck court?
That is correct.
And this is one single truck court, is not a double-loaded with another building, obviously?
That's correct. It's not a cross-stock, and there is no trailer storage on the other side of our loading dock here.
Now, does the Franklin Township zoning ordinance require a fire lane around the entire building?
Not that I can find.
Okay. So the reason we put that fire lane in was because it was requested by Mr. House?
That's correct.
And if we were to remove the fire lane, how much impervious coverage would we be removing, and what would the percentage of that coverage be?
If we removed the majority of the eastern side access aisle, so from where my cursor is, all the way to the rear here, we would drop it from 66% down to 61%. There's almost 15,000 square feet of additional pavement for that eastern access aisle.
Okay. In addition, we do have that second, or that driveway that takes us to that fire lane. Is that driveway necessary for this project?
Not in my professional opinion. 74,000 square feet does not generate a ton of traffic where you need to truly separate the cars and the trucks like we saw on the plan. There's only 10 loading docks in the back, so in my professional opinion, I think we can easily provide a singular driveway, which will be the western driveway, to have cars and tractor-trailers come in. And with the removal of this front portion, Mr. Lanford, we'd be under 60% and compliant with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So basically, the driving factor for the impervious coverage request is the fire lane on the easterly side of that property, correct?
That is correct.
Can you just talk a little bit about, I mean, I overall support of your request to eliminate that eastern driveway. Everything you say makes sense. In order to, if you will, put forth the positive criteria, how would you argue to fire prevention, or at least have us support to fire prevention, how you would address a fire on that side of the building? Just so there is a basis with which we can help you with that.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, and we do have a professional planner that'll put on for you the site-specific proofs of the C1, C2 criteria. From an engineering standpoint, I'd like to help you with the fact that our neighbor located to the east has a full-access drive aisle that's right on our property line. So our building being, you know, approximately 50 feet tall, God forbid should something be ablaze, I don't believe that they would be parking the truck right next door to it. They would, I think, either set back on Schoolhouse Road so they have a safe distance for their firefighters to the building, or they may be able to pull into our neighbor's lot to the east and stage in there to additionally support the fire activities.
And what would be your estimated distance between how close a fire truck could get using the neighbor's driveway and where your proposed building would be? Because it seems like it would be pretty close.
It certainly is. Our building right now is 50 feet to the property line, and the edge of the concrete curb for the parking spaces is approximately 10, and those spaces are approximately 20. So there'll be about 80 feet from the building.
Okay. Thank you, that helps a lot.
Okay. Also, for the record, you indicated that the original plan had a building of approximately 90,000 square feet?
That's correct.
And it was reduced. Can you, for the record, indicate what the allowable building coverage is and what the proposed building coverage is going to be?
Certainly, and we're referencing again Exhibit A1. The maximum lot coverage by buildings in your zone is 50%, and we are proposing 32.8%.
So the building itself is well under the zone requirement for building coverage, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let us move forward to the staff reports. The first report that I have in front of me is a report from Mr. Healy, and that report is a modification. There was an original report that was dated May of this year, and then with the revised plans that we submitted and also with the amendment to the zoning ordinance, Mr. Healy supplemented his report, and the latest date is August 12th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And with respect to the variance and the variance justifications, you presented some of the information as you indicated. The planner will provide some additional testimony concerning the justification for the coverage variance. And I know you mentioned briefly the truck court variance. While you indicated, and this board has heard it enough on other applications, can you spend about 30 seconds giving the rationale for that truck court variance?
Certainly. Just to add to the record, your ordinance asks for 2X the truck court, which would be approximately 147 feet required. We are proposing 130 feet. You can see in the rear portion of our civil site drawings, the record engineering drawings, that we run the largest wheel-based tractor-trailer through the site, and it will safely maneuver there, so we don't need the extra impervious coverage in our professional opinion. You'll hear from the planner of the C2 planning proofs, less pavement is good from a multitude of reasons, impervious coverage, landscaping, and stormwater management. So overall, we believe that the truck court is designed appropriately and will function well.
Okay. Now, with respect to the issue of trees, again, you've touched on it. We are removing about 670 trees. We're proposing initially to replace it with 46 trees. Mr. Healy had a comment as to whether we can supplement additional trees. Can you indicate where they would be, or show with your cursor where we can supplement, and where we would be happy to meet with Mr. Healy to provide additional trees?
Certainly. The western property line currently right now does not have any proposed trees, and we'll definitely be providing some there. If the board so wishes to remove the eastern access aisle, we believe that we can plant a significant amount of trees in that area as well. I do not believe it is feasible to hit 673, but we will certainly add as many as we can in accordance with landscape standards for safe planting and growth opportunity.
So, two things that just came to mind. So, again, in support of removing the eastern drive aisle, I think in allowing fire access, if you do that, like you said, you can plant more trees. But maybe it would be prudent to leave a gap in that tree, like, almost like an access drive, if you will, but that's not a real drive, but a gap in the trees so that if a ladder had to get in there, they have sufficient room to do so. And I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how big a gap that could be. My other comment is, to the left side, whatever that is, north, I guess?
Yes.
So that, the aerial looks fairly solidly wooded.
Yes.
You've cleared it and are planting some trees back there. Is there any way to just leave what's there?
We can't because that's where our bio-retention basin has to go.
In the back? Oh, I thought it was more toward...
We have three, actually. We have one up front along Schoolhouse. We have a second one in the rear.
Oh, okay.
And then we also have a third that's underground underneath this drive aisle here.
Okay. But you can plant around the bio, right?
So the bio-retention has low-lying plants in it. We can't propose trees, unfortunately.
Right, but you can plant around the basin, right?
We certainly can.
So you can enhance the north side, you can enhance certainly the, what is it, the west, east, the lower side?
We can certainly start to add more around this area.
More directionally challenged, right?
Yes.
But yeah, no, that, I mean, 673, yeah, you're not going to get there, and you'll make a nice contribution to this shade tree fund, and they'll use it to plant trees in town, so.
Okay. I just have a follow-up before we go too far further. With the fire lane and the use of the neighbor's driveway, is that something that happens often in the industry? And is there something that the board should require? You know, we're depending on fire access from another property. Should we require some sort of form for you to submit that there's permission to do this? Or I'm only asking because I don't ever remember us having a situation like this.
If I can just, I'll respond from a technical standpoint, Mr. Thomas. It depends on the type of fire. For example, this building is going to have full fire suppression system in it, and within the racking system that will be inside of it, they will have what's called the ESFR. So in this building, you'll see occasionally the sprinkler heads. So if there's a fire in here, the whole room gets washed out. In these facilities, it will actually localize if there's a potential fire inside the building. A lot of times, the fire truck doesn't necessarily need to be so far if it's a small fire. So for them, they can just pull up into the parking lot and then go through various different entry points. If we are talking about a full ablaze, regardless of the site, the fire engine or truck will not come on the property. It's too dangerous.
Now, we're making this more than I meant it to be.
My apologies.
Does the fire department need permission to go on the other property?
I don't think so. I think they can drive onto whatever they need to fight the fire.
And we can put this in if we choose to do it as part of the resolution, knowing that we're depending on another property in some rare instances. There's nothing formal, is there anything formal needed for that to be okay? That's all.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a suggestion, I don't think we should be trying to design something on the fly here.
We're not.
No, I know.
Let Mr. Clarkin, he has something to say.
Bob, we don't need to require an easement to be obtained by this applicant from the next-door property owner. There's certain emergency access, all right, in times of fires and other natural disasters that would allow the fire company onto the adjoining property.
Okay, just so, they don't get there and they're not allowed to go.
If there was a fire on that, on the adjoining building, they'd be using that same driveway, going to that same general location to fight that fire, and the fire truck is going to go where it has to go.
The problem is John House isn't here to provide you with a response to their proposal. So what I would suggest is if the board is favorable to having that fire lane be removed, then state so, state that in the resolution, and request that John House work with the applicant to see if there's some other alternative to that full fire lane.
Yeah, no, and that's kind of where I'm going, is I'm trying to, and I think the applicant's done it, elicit reasons that the board can use, other than that it's simply not required by zoning law, which is probably the biggest legal underpinning we have. But apart from that, as a courtesy to John, whose advice we generally take as fire prevention, I'm just trying to build a more friendly case to why we would eliminate that driveway, other than the fact that, and now it's only used for cars that won't ever be used, so it's not a better zoning alternative in my opinion.
And just to make the record clear, we have no problem putting that lane in, and that's why we showed it on the plan. It's really up to the board to do what they feel is most appropriate.
But that causes the impervious coverage variance, as the applicant has testified. So if we want it, we're basically obligated to give the applicant the variance to 66.9%. The applicant can comply with the current standard if we don't allow the driveway. And so we're creating the variance by putting in this fire lane. I don't see that as a better zoning alternative, when I think the applicant's demonstrated that this building wouldn't be negatively impacted in terms of access to fire if we eliminated that. So that's kind of what I'm trying to build the case for.
What I would suggest is that if the application is approved, that the condition be that the applicant work with Mr. House on possible alternatives that would still allow the elimination of the approximate 15,000-square-feet pavement.
We can word it that way, or just remind me when it comes time to make a motion one way or the other.
I think the rest of Mr. Healy's reports do, oh, I just, do we have on the plan a proposed sign, a freestanding sign?
We have a location, yes. Give me one second. So we have proposed truck entrance signs on the driveway? You're talking about for the designation or the...
An identification sign for the building itself, you know, so-and-so company to we have that on the plan?
I don't believe so, just because it's speculative, but I think we show a sign chart, which would be, yes, here we go, that we would comply with all of the freestanding and building-mounted signs associated with it.
So, can you just briefly indicate what the ordinance is for a freestanding sign?
Certainly. It would be one sign about 100 square feet, 10 feet tall, and 10 feet off the property line.
Okay. And we would be able to put one somewhere in the front of that building that would comply and not need a variance?
Very much so.
Okay.
So, before we leave Mark's report, let's just address this sidewalk. So, so the sidewalk connection, to me, it's most important to have the sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road, rather than accessibility to the parking lot. I'm not sure it's most practical for anyone who's disabled to navigate a ski slope, switchback. You know, they'd probably drive into the facility, and, and obviously, it's going to be handicapped accessible, so therefore, they would park, and they would go in. I can go either way with the sort of the stairs, but, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with not having access to the parking lot from the sidewalk. I mean, you could walk down the sidewalk to the driveway, could you not?
That's correct.
And then get in? So I, I would just say the sidewalk is fine. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, if the board has other, but, but thinking about it, I think, I think it makes the most sense to have the sidewalk, to have that interconnection on Schoolhouse Road, but I don't see the, I don't see that there's much to be gained by putting access to the parking lot. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
I, I have a question. What is the reason for not having trees in the back?
So we do have some trees in the back.
What is the reason not to increase the number of count? You had said before, there would be low-level shrubs and not trees.
In, in our bio-retention basin. So the New Jersey Best Management Practice Manual requires us to have certain types of vegetation and plantings inside of that. Trees are not one of those species that are allowed. Root system and things like that, those smaller low-lying shrubs are easily retained and allow stormwater to go through it. So what we did just advise, though, is that we will work with Mr. Healy to add probably a double row of trees on the northern line, and then significantly supplement those on the eastern and western side property lines.
And Josh, for the benefit of the board and the public, and if you can blow that back up, can you just outline the area of the bio-retention basin where we can't put trees in?
Certainly. Follow my cursor on the northern side. It is this triangular shape here. And then on the southern side, it is this rectangular shape along Schoolhouse Road.
Understood. Thank you.
What about comment four? I understand there was some discussion with Darren Mazzi from CME regarding this issue?
Certainly. So, not to summarize Mark's comments, but due to the recent March 2021 stormwater management regulations, and Franklin Township just having very shallow weathered rock, and very shallow seasonal high groundwater, in order to construct any, any type of new development, we essentially have to fill the site to put an above-ground basin on top of existing grade, meaning the existing grade is very, very close to storm, to the seasonal high groundwater. So we have to fill the site to create a hole for the stormwater to go to, and then you have to continue to fill to build your parking lot, loading dock, and then your building, which is four feet higher than the loading dock space. So Mark's comment talks about how the building finished floor elevation is about 10 feet higher than existing grade, and he's potentially concerned about, you know, its view as it's 10 feet higher. From an engineering and planning standpoint, the building right now is proposed at 51 feet. The zone allows 65 feet. Now, your building definition doesn't read like this, but if we did want to interpret, interpret that, you take 51 feet, add the 10, and you're still at 61 feet, so you're still below what the larger structure could be on site. Now, again, that's not how your building definition reads, but that was a zoning alternative, how I looked at it when we were doing the design. Mr. Healy is correct, though. I did work with Darren Mazzi at CME, and what we advised, that if, should the board act favorably, we will condition the approval on doing supplemental testing with CME to witness the tests. If he believes that the stormwater is actually lower, I can reduce the height. I can reduce the amount of fill. We were being conservative, seeing very shallow groundwater, so we have to fill the 10 feet to comply with the DEP standards.
Okay. And you would be willing, and the client, you spoke to the owner, they would be willing to do the additional testing to see if the height, if the grade can be reduced?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And Darren thinks, again, not putting words in his mouth, but it's, it's possible that we can reduce that 10 feet.
We are both certainly hopeful, hopeful.
All right. And then maybe the architect can clarify, because you had said that the height of the building's 51, and I think I had questioned that in my report.
Yeah.
Maybe the architect can clarify what the actual building height is per our ordinance.
Yeah, he will clarify, because he measured to the top of the parapet, which is not the height of the building. The building is actually less than 51.
Thank you.
On to...
I'm sorry.
Moving on to the report, if I can find it. Of CME, where did it go? It was originally in May, and then it was redone, I think, in September.
August 24th.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
August 24th, 2022, which again is the second report of CME after the revisions. The report assists of ages. You've had an opportunity to review the entire report.
I certainly have.
Okay. And can we address all of the comments from Darren that are contained in that report?
We certainly can. We, there's some here, and areas in here where they ask for some supplemental testimony, so we just want to touch on that, just to build the record. Item 11 talks about that we will most likely need that design waiver for the connection of the sidewalk from Schoolhouse up to the parking lot, so I know we were just discussing it with the board chairman, but we will be seeking that design waiver for the connection. Moving along to item C under six, it's the fourth bullet down. We just mentioned that. Again, the reason for the fill on the property is due to the seasonal high groundwater table and the weathered rock. We discussed D1, which was the trees, and potentially increasing throughout the site, as well as the payment and LO. We discussed E8, which is the condition, hopefully, of supplemental testing with CME to witness. Nine is the same. Everything else, Mr. Lanford, we will comply with and work with Darren's office, and I'd like to also advise that at the end of his report, he lists some agencies. I'm happy to report that we received our DEP LOI as well in record time.
Okay. And we'll provide copies of all of the outside agency approvals to the township, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And all of the other comments that he wants us to address, they're minor engineering comments that do not substantially alter the plan that the board is reviewing this evening?
That's correct. They are technical in nature and will not change the size of the building, parking spaces, or loading facilities.
So the only thing that may affect what you're looking at is if we can lower the elevation?
That's correct.
Thank you. And I believe all of the other reports that I received from police and health had no comments. When I was here two weeks ago, there was an environmental commission report that I did not get. I went through my file, and I don't have one.
Um, yeah, I mean, maybe I can, I can touch on that. There's, there's one other comment from John House, was about the fire, fire connection or fire hydrants.
Oh, that, that we will work out with John, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, environmental commission, EV charging station, make-ready law that New Jersey passed, so you have to comply with that.
We will comply with that.
Solar-ready?
It will be solar-ready.
Uh, wait a minute. Sorry, Mr. Lanford. So yes, there's an EV charging station on the property, it's located on the plans. This building, though, is under 100,000 square feet, so it is not required by the new statute to be solar-ready. Not to say that the applicant, depending on the user, may not contemplate it, but it is not being proposed at this time.
So it, it's not solar-ready? It's not going to be built solar-ready?
It is not.
Is, can you make it such, so that, I mean, how would you retrofit that, if somebody were interested, rather than build it de novo, solar-ready?
I think we can ask the architect that, rather than...
We can, we can wait till you call him. So, probably you got your record wetland LOI, because there aren't, it says, according to the environmental commission, no wetlands present within 150 feet of the site. They did find wetlands directly adjacent to the site. The EC requests clarification on this issue, as well as an LOI, which you gave them, so I think that's been addressed. Tree replacement, they basically say the same thing we did, and to replace your white pines with a different conifer species, like spruce. Anti-idling signs?
We'll, we'll be glad to put those up.
So you've got the environmental commission reporting.
All right. Mark, can you send that to me tomorrow, so I can get it to Josh, so we make sure, when he's doing the revisions, we get it covered?
Before you call your next one, just let me ask the board if they have any other questions for the engineer. Ed, go ahead.
Well, I'm, just wondering about the white pines. That's mainly when you're planting evergreens specifically as a buffer, then they, the white pines lose their lower branches and no longer buffer. I don't think that that's a problem here. But I would just comment, you know, we've had a lot of applications in this area, and nobody else has ever come to saying they have to put the building up 10 feet above grade for drainage purposes.
It's...
I, I think you're imagining this.
I do not want to add 10 feet of fill to the site. My client certainly does not want...
I'm sure they don't.
Unfortunately, in March 2021, the stormwater regulations were at, modified, which is going to greatly change the future of site plant applications that you see before this board. I am sure, over the last six months, some of the applications you're seeing actually predate those regulations, and they were grandfathered in. Though I'm sure there are places also in Franklin that don't have such seasonal high groundwater, nor weathered rock so close to the ground. As we advise, I hope the water is shallower. It's not my experience in Franklin, based on the conditions.
You hope it's deeper.
Yes. Because if the water is deeper, then I can dig down to set my basin bottom and reduce the fill. Unfortunately, my hands are tied, though, by the state mandated regulations. I certainly do not want to add more fill than I don't have to.
Well, we're going to do new tests, so science will tell us where to go. Okay. Why don't you call, who is, whoever's next on your roster there, Peter?
I will call our architect, since it appears that there are some questions that the board may have. Raise your right hand, so I may swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Brendan Leadbeater, associate and project architect with Pratt Design Studio, located at 175 Belford Ave, our, sorry, 175 10th Street, Belford Ave.
Can you spell your last name, please? Brendan, your firm prepared the architectural plans for this project?
That is correct.
All right. And very briefly, can you describe the building, both...
Please, Peter, just make sure. Are you licensed architect, state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, and it is current, yes.
Okay. Thank you. He's accepted. Continue.
Trying to jump the gun. Describe the building that we are proposing.
Sure. This is going to be proposed as a one-story warehouse, roughly 74,800 square feet. It's going to be roughly around 220 feet deep by 340 feet wide, with a proposed clear height of 45 feet within, inside the building. Along the north side, we propose 10 dock doors, along with two drive-in doors. Along the east and west portions of the facade, we are just proposing several man-door accesses, access into the warehouse facility. To the south portion of the building, along Schoolhouse Road, we'll have proposed access into what could be potentially office fit-out area, along with man-doors.
With respect to the office fit-out area, and again, it may vary a little bit based on the user, but what do, what do we base our parking projections, and, and what do we base or show as the office fit-out area?
Most likely, it'll be within this northwest quadrant at this location, and generally tends to be around 20, 2,000 to 2,500 square feet.
Okay. And there would be an access point from the parking lot to that office area, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Can you take the board to the outside of the building?
So, moving on to SD2.
All right. Let's, let's, before we get, that has some color on it. Is that consistent with what we originally submitted with this application, except for the colorization?
That's correct, yes.
We need it.
We not, need not mark it.
Okay.
So, just starting with the drawing in the top-left corner, this is the north elevation, just showing the overall relationship of the dock doors and the drive-in doors to the facade. We're also allowing for some clear-story windows above this area to deliver daylight into the space, and then some horizontal and vertical accents, and some painted areas within that facade that generally, generally are these blue, gray, and white tones. Looking at the south elevation, over here on the left corner, this is where we are providing access into the building, where we'll likely house and locate the office fit-out area. Along that facade, again, we have clear-story windows, just to sort of provide natural daylight into the space.
And then, again, that blue color will be carried through there?
That's correct.
Okay. And what color will the panels be?
A variation of lighter white hues and gray hues.
Okay, so it's not one solid color, it's, it's a mixture of colors?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, as requested by Mr. Healy, I, I think your plans indicate that the parapet height is 51 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And the township ordinance does not count the parapet as part, as part of the building height. Can you, for the record, so that we're all clear, indicate what the building height is exclusive of the parapet?
So at its highest point, it's, it's likely going to be roughly 50 feet 6 inches.
Okay. So we're basically almost at the 51 anyway?
Correct, correct. But along the, the longer facades, we're down to 48 feet 10 inches. And then, you know, we have some various taller accents at the corners, to allow for the proper clearances within the building, and also to allow for that, what we were discussing, to be solar-ready, where we're also including an eight, eight pounds per square foot on that roof capacity to allow for, for that, that solar.
All right.
Good.
Okay. So the building will be able to handle solar if a tenant requests it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Where will the mechanicals be located?
As shown on the floor plan, we generally like to locate them on the roof, centrally located on the roof, as to not be seen from a sightline, from a, a street, a street location. So typically, we have two to four roof units on a facility of this size, and they would generally be, you know, located at the center of the building, along the column line, to properly support that structure.
So we're looking at that exhibit of the, the building where it says proposed warehouse, it would be generally in, in that area where the utilities would be located?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And they would be partially screened by the parapet, and by moving them back that far from the roadway, they would not be visible from the roadway?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Any, any questions from the board for the architect?
Just, just...
You, you, go, go ahead, Jim. Jim, and then, oh, okay, Mark.
So, the building height, what is the height to the roof along the, the side that's facing Schoolhouse Road, exclusive of the parapet?
So based on this, this red dotted line indicates the roof line? I don't know if you can see that on the drawing?
I have it on my phone.
Okay. Okay. So it's just, it's roughly going to be around 50 feet, 6 inches to that roof line, once you include insulation and the thickness of the floor deck.
Okay. So here's, here's the thing. If you're over, yes, the current ordinance or the ordinance that was in effect at the time this was submitted allowed to go above 50 feet, but then there's larger setbacks that come into play. So you need to make a decision as the applicant, are you going to lower that height below 50 feet and then these setbacks apply? Or there's a larger side setback requirement of 40 feet that comes into play and then you need a variance for that.
Apply, Mr. Healy, with the increase in setbacks. Underneath our bulk chart, we've taken it from your zoning ordinance, the following building setbacks shall apply to buildings taller than 50 feet in building height. Front yard shall be 75 feet and our proposed right now is 135 to Schoolhouse. Any one side yard shall be 40 feet and a total of two side yards shall be 100. And our side yard is 50 feet and then the two total is over 100. And then lastly is the rear yard should be increased to 100 and our building is setback at 176.
Okay. I must have been looking at an older version of the, of the plan, so.
No worries at all, yeah. So we, we agree with you, there is a, when your building gets taller, your ordinance contemplates more restrictive building envelope to keep it away from side property lines, rear property lines, and a front yard. But I believe at 51 feet, we comply with the bulk standards.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking because I think it was in the, the original version with the 90,000 square foot and you didn't have that fire lane and you were like 12 feet from the proper line or something. You moved it back to the 50 feet. All right, thank you.
Jim?
Your ground floor plan does not show the location of any office space, correct?
Not at this time, no.
All right. You're going to revise that plan sheet then to show a maximum of 2,500 in the northwest quadrant somewhere?
We'll revise that and file with the compliance set, yes.
Okay. Peter, they'll live with a cap of 2,500.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Who's your next one?
Very brief traffic testimony. Mr. Chase.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
It's Corey, C-O-R-E-Y. Last name's Chase, C-H-A-S-E. Business address is 245 Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Mr. Chase, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am and license is currently in good standing.
He's accepted, Peter.
Okay. And do you specialize in traffic?
I do.
Okay. And you were one of the authors of the traffic impact study dated July 18, 2022 that was submitted in conjunction with this application?
That's correct.
Okay. Very briefly, can you indicate to the board the trip generations that would be generated from this site as a result of this development? And if you can break it down both into motor vehicle trips and truck trips, I think the board would be interested in that.
Certainly. So as Mr. Lanford just mentioned, we did prepare a traffic impact study for the subject application. The trip generation for the proposed 74,800 square foot speculative type warehouse is summarized on page five. It's located in table three at the bottom of the page. The trip generation was projected utilizing the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the national and state standard for developing traffic projections. As you can see, we do provide the weekday AM peak hour and the weekday PM peak hour site traffic for the use. In totality, it's going to generate a maximum of 35 additional trips on the adjacent roadway network during the peak hour. So that equates to approximately one trip every two minutes during the peak period. The Institute of Transportation Engineers and the NJDOT have set a threshold of an additional 100 trips during the peak hour as being a significant increase in traffic. So we're approximately a third of that significant increase in traffic. So from an overall traffic generation standpoint, not a significant increase in traffic. We did provide the breakdown between passenger vehicles as well as truck trips during the peak hour and you can see it's going to generate a maximum of five truck trips during the weekday evening peak hour.
Okay. Did you also review the onsite circulation that was proposed both with the full access around the building and also the onsite circulation if the fire lane were to be removed from the building?
We did. So we reviewed the site access and circulation to both the truck court as well as the employee parking for the plan that's before you on A1 this evening, which utilizes the two full movement driveways along Schoolhouse Road. We also reviewed the alternative that Mr. Sewell presented earlier, which would eliminate that eastern access point and provide sole access to the site for both passenger cars and trucks through the western access point. And in my professional opinion, from a site access and circulation standpoint, the site will function safely and efficiently with the two access points as well as a singular access point located on the western portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. And also, obviously, you're familiar with Schoolhouse Road and the impact, I know we didn't have to provide because it's less than 100 trips, but do you have an opinion as to the impact of this site on Schoolhouse Road and the surrounding traffic?
I do, and we did do a pre and post development analysis at the two adjacent intersections along Schoolhouse Road and found that there were no degradations in level of service from the pre-development condition to the post-development condition.
Okay. And I, the other question I have is, as you're aware, there are numerous applications that have been before the board involving warehouses generally around this area. The area where the subject property is, is already developed. There are no new construction being proposed until we get all the way up, I guess, to almost, I think 17th Schoolhouse would be the only new building, which is fairly a significant distance. All the other buildings around the subject property are already developed, is that correct?
That is correct. And as Mr. Sewell noted in his testimony, the subject property is currently developed with an existing light industrial use as part of our analysis. We could have taken credit for that in our comparison to the pre and post development conditions, but we didn't do that to be conservative and still showed no degradations and level of service.
The other intersection was Belmont. So the nearest new construction to this site is Belmont and Schoolhouse. Everything else between Belmont and Schoolhouse is basically at this point existing office, manufacturing, and/or warehouse, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Peter, quick question, as I've done with other applications, both yours and others, is there, and I'm struggling a little bit with, because of Schoolhouse Road, to me, there's only one way to go. But any signage to direct trucks to the proper route to get onto 287? Would this be useful in this application?
We certainly can. Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to work with your engineer. We've developed a way of finding signage packages before in other municipalities and we're certainly amenable to working with your engineer to prepare something similar.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think in this case, I think trucks can either go left or right when they're exiting because I think if they go right, they can still get to 287 going down Randolph.
Yeah, that's correct.
And going left, they'd go down Cotton Town.
They'd go down Cotton Town, correct.
That's why I struggled with whether or not signage would be necessary on your site because of that very reason. Unlike some other applications that we've had, both yours and others, that where it might be useful. Here, you can go left or right as long as you, and it's up to the township, which I know they're working on it, in fact, in some places that I think it's been done, where there's been directional signage to 287, so.
Well, in line with this, I think the township needs to get their 287 sign at the intersection of Randolph and Schoolhouse Lane because while the trucks coming out of this facility would be able to go left or right, we're not wanting them to go past the stoplight at Randolph.
Right.
And right now, there's no real indication of the direction of 287. And I only say that because I happen to follow a truck that went all the way to Canal Road today on Schoolhouse Lane. So there's no marking out there. I guess that's incumbent on us to get it out there, but a little bit of education within the facility.
Let's talk to, let's, as we've done in the past, let's talk to Bob Vornenmaker and see where we're at with that. Because that's, the genesis of that was getting some of those signs on roads like Elizabeth and things like that. And Bob makes a great point, so we'll, we'll work with that. It's not, it's not your, I just wanted to know if there was site signage that was necessary. And if you're going to tell somebody to go left or go right, there's probably no point in putting up a sign, so.
I forgot to ask Mr. Chase one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I know Josh talked about it, but can you just very briefly talk about the truck court variance?
Certainly, and as Mr. Sewell pointed out, the truck court has been designed with the typical dimensions that we see through industrial applications that we work on quite regularly. So it is dimensions such that you have a 60-foot loading pad and a 70-foot aisle, which is typical dimensions for a truck court facility. And as Mr. Lanford noted earlier, it's not, it's not like you have docks opposite the truck court, it's a single-loaded facility.
Okay. And there are turning tablets that have been provided to show that it works?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any board questions for this witness? If not, I guess planning?
Mr. O'Brien.
Who I will tell you right now was qualified.
We, knowing his.
You can put it on record.
Knowing his suspect history, we should ask him if he's still qualified.
He always says he has a license. We never made him shell it, though.
Not A2.
And if he'll grab his mic or whatever, solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Kevin O'Brien, Shamrock Enterprises, Madison House, Suite B, Madison Avenue in Raway, New Jersey. And you're still licensed as a professional planner, correct? Licensed and current. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, you're familiar with the zoning ordinance of the township of Franklin and the master plan of the township of Franklin?
I am.
Familiar with municipal land use law?
Yes, sir.
And you're familiar with this application?
Yes.
And you've had an opportunity to visit the subject property and also the areas surrounding the subject property, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. And you've heard the testimony of the witnesses that preceded you discussing the variances that we are seeking this evening, correct?
I have.
Okay. Can you briefly review with the board the variances that we are seeking and also provide to the board your professional opinion as to whether the variances can be granted by this board?
Yes. This application is looking for preliminary and final site plan in addition to the impervious cover and the loading berth depth variances. Both of those are C2 variances. The loading berth length is justified, as you've heard from both the traffic engineer and the site engineer, because the proposed length of 130 feet complies with the industry standard. This board has granted similar relief to other applications such as this in the past and the traffic impact report states the good circulation and adequate parking are supplied. In terms of the impervious cover application, the impervious cover is, as you've heard from the site engineer, driven by the fact that a fire access road has been requested on the east side of the site. In addition to that, a separate driveway is requested on the east side of the site for car vehicles only, trucks will be entering from the western side. These measures bump the impervious cover to 67%. If the fire lane on the north, on the east, east side were removed, we'd be at approximately 61%. If the eastern driveway were removed, we would be in compliance with the ordinance. Should this board wish to continue with the fire lane and the eastern driveway, we believe that that variance is justified due to the fact that fire health and safety are at stake. The fire department, the fire prevention officer has requested it, therefore, in their opinion, there must be a reason for it and we would reply, we would rely on their good judgment to prevent fires that, in their opinion, that it's necessary. But if we do find that it is not on behalf of this board and in further discussions, then we would also justify the variance for the 61% for the eastern driveway in that we believe that's a de minimis exception to the, to the ordinance. And on the other hand, if we go with no eastern driveway and no fire access, we're in compliance and we believe that the board would have no problem with that. In terms of meeting the criteria for site plan application, we believe the master plan does have several passages that address this. The 2016 reexamination states, quote, "The manufacturing sector, while declining at the statewide level, continues to maintain a high level of activity in Franklin due to the connectivity of major roadways, availability of land, and presence of workers." And by extension, I include warehousing in the manufacturing, in the manufacturing sector. There is a goal to encourage commercial and industrial development in areas with access to major regional highways and in established areas. Encourage infill within existing industrial districts to reduce sprawl by increasing density while minimizing environmental impact, quote unquote. And I believe this application supports those goals by providing an office and warehouse building very close to Route 287, minimizes impact upon the area and the township.
If, if the board were to request that the fire access and that driveway remain, do you see any negative impacts if the board requested they remain and the variance is necessary for the impervious coverage?
I do not see any negative impacts. I think that it's a better planning alternative if the fire lane were not there because it would increase impervious cover. It would give an opportunity for more trees to be planted. I think the chair's idea of leaving an alleyway for access to the outside of the building is a wonderful one and given the great length of that, you might even think about perhaps two, sort of like a fire break type of alleyway. But no, I do not see a negative impact from that.
Thank you. And finally, did you reach a conclusion regarding these, the variances that we are seeking, which we are seeking under the C2, correct?
We are indeed. I believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments in that this proposal is a better planning alternative than a more conforming design. I believe there's going to be a positive impact upon the community by considerably reducing stormwater runoff from the site. As you've heard, there are no measures at this, at this time. Another positive impact is economic, an additional tax ratable, permanent employment on site, and temporary construction employment, all of which will support local businesses. And I can conclude that I believe this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the zone plan and without substantial impairment of the, of the public good and the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Any questions of the board for Mr. O'Brien?
Just two, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Can you reach the conclusion that the benefits substantially outweigh?
I can, Mr. Clark, and thank you.
And I presume that the 61%, the de minimis factor is what drives your conclusion that there's no detriment to the public good and no impairment to the zone plan?
It does indeed. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes your.
That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, please, that would be, that would be great in case we need to refer to it during the public portion. So at this time, I'll make a motion to open to the public for any questions or comments regarding this particular application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will ask upfront that we try to limit to three minutes and I will try to help you do that if I feel that we're going off the rails, but let's, let's start.
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way, Somerset. My question, I'm actually not going to really even discuss the entire application, what's My question, I'm actually not going to really even discuss the entire application, what's contained herein. My concern is actually more with the actual kind of format of the application itself. We saw, we noticed something recently. If you go to the last page of the site plan application, as well as the next-to-last page of the variance application, there's a notary page, and the second half of that page, under owner, it says, okay, the owner signed is Pauline, I'm probably going to mispronounce this, Belag, Belag, okay, Belag, okay, that's the owner. The notary as signed is Ilona Belag. So, do we have a relative, a close relative, that contradicts standard, I think, notary procedure, is, is signing as the notary for Pauline Belag, who's the owner? That doesn't seem to me to be standard notary procedure at all, to have a relative who may be a close relative, we don't know. I mean, I could ask Ms., Mr. Lanford if he's aware, are these close relatives?
I, I would-
You can start, Peter.
I would have no idea whether they are close relatives or not, and also if the person who is notarizing does not have a financial interest in the application, even though they are a relative, they can notarize that signature.
I guess I, I looked up different information under Department of Treasuries, the state of New Jersey, and it did, it did say that, but I guess we'll have to check again, but I, I, I don't know. I, it seems to me to be very, very specious. It's not normal notary procedure. I, I, again, I have a cousin who's done thousands of notaries in New York, I once passed the notary test in California.
Here, the easier solution would be, can it be re-notarized by someone else?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I can obviously have that done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. Mr. Orsini, did things change with the three, before it wasn't three minutes?
Oh, I just want to make sure we have enough time, but I don't, I don't think we're going to run into that problem tonight, so just-
Okay. All right. So, if the eastern driveway and the fire lane are removed, is it going to be less, 60% or less?
If the fire lane is removed, it would be down to 61%, and if the fire lane and the driveway were both to be removed, it would be under 60.
Okay. All right. And as far as the, there's over 600 trees being removed, and I guess three basins, the basin that's going to be in the front, is that going to have something around it, because that, like, is on the front of the property? Do I need to be sworn in, or-
Not, I don't think so.
Not so far.
Yes, the basin in the front will be walled.
Will be walled, so nobody could go over the wall or client, you know, get into that basin?
No.
Okay, that's good.
But it won't be a wet basin, right? I mean, it's, it, or, I mean, it's going to have shrubs in it, and it's a bio-retention basin, right?
That's a drain within 72 hours, correct?
Somebody could drown in it?
Has to be drained-
Because that's a great, that's a great question.
72 hours it will have to be drained by, per the BMP.
And something that I read on, on the, on the plans and all, it had to do with a water moratorium up until September 2023, anybody, it was on those, on those plans?
Correct. There is a moratorium, I believe, in Schoolhouse Road due to its recent improvements, so they do not want us to trench into the road. If this applicant wanted to expedite construction, they would then have to mill and overlay the entire width of Schoolhouse Road. But if there is a moratorium and they want it to just trench, they would have to wait till September in order to dig into the road to connect the water line.
Okay. So, are they, when are they going to start building if this does get approved?
That's difficult to say.
Yeah, we, we, we don't know if the owner's going to wait till he finds a user, or if he's just going to build it on spec, so I can't answer that question.
So, but it'll be able, with the, the water moratorium, are they going to have water on the site?
Oh, no, yeah, it's, it's just a question of how we do it. If we want to do it in a certain manner, we have to wait till 2023. If we want to do it before, then we have to do it in a, in a different manner. Mr. Howe can probably answer that.
It's for a road opening, to be able to open the pavement area between the curbs. There's nothing to do with water being, a moratorium for water to be provided to the property. It's just the manner they go through to get the water from the existing main to behind the curb.
Okay. So, if there's a fire, there's plenty of water to put out fires and to help with the building.
Yeah, it's just when they repave the street, they don't want it torn up again right away. So, they put a moratorium on until, so, in other words, if they were to go in now, they would have to, like you said, Peter, pave the entire width, rather than just patch where they would connect into the street, which they would be able to do after September of 2023. But they can get water no matter what.
And, and you all were mentioning about, you know, how there's, there's not going to be any, I guess, negative effect with the warehouses. Now, you all are familiar with the warehouse ordinance that was presented in July, because I guess there were a lot of warehouses being built up in this area, right?
We are aware of the ordinance.
Okay. And you mentioned also about not many other warehouses around, and on Wiley Drive, I know, but as far as impacting traffic. So, I, I'm worried about the traffic impact and just people who live in the area who, let's say, are going from, are trying to go to ShopRite, to go grocery shopping, or try to go to the drugstore and all. So, there's a warehouse on Wiley Drive, there's like three warehouses right behind each other. So, if, it was mentioned with the traffic impact that it was two trips every eight minutes, what was the, what was the quoted, I, I wrote it down.
It was one trip every two minutes during the peak period.
One trip every two minutes?
That's correct. So, a total of 30, over the course of an hour.
Truck trips.
No, that's not what the testimony was.
Five truck trips?
It was five truck trips and 25 car trips.
Five truck trips, how often?
Over the course of an hour. So, that's one every 10 minutes.
Okay. And Mr. Orsini mentioned about a right or left-hand turn. Now, we know that when trucks make a right-hand turn, they kind of can't see to the, they make wide right-hand turns. Would it be recommended, as far as traffic-wise, that the trucks make a left out of there instead of making a right out onto the street?
That's a good question, and we take that into consideration when we're designing the driveway, and we design the geometry such that the truck can make that movement comfortably. So, you'll see a wider driveway than if it was just to accommodate passenger cars, and they also have more generous radii, the curves that are adjacent to the driveway, to let that truck make the maneuver comfortably.
So, it would be safe if they were making a right out of there?
That's correct.
Okay. Because, like, tonight, I had to drive going down that street, and it's, you know, it's just two lanes.
Correct.
Okay. And the impact, I know you mentioned the impact is not going to be significant. Now, I guess it's unfortunate that the studies don't include all the other warehouses that are going to have an impact, and do you know what's going to be in this warehouse?
We don't. It's speculative in nature, and our traffic projections reflect the fact that it's a speculative-type building.
Right. So, how, what's the, I guess, when it's a speculative versus, like, a very light manufacturing warehouse that doesn't have that many trips versus a very, very busy warehouse, what's the range in between? You know what I mean? Like, from the lowest to the highest?
There's a large differential between them, but they all have different land use categories. So, you know, there's e-commerce fulfillment center, there's cold storage as a variety of uses, but the, the use that we're proposing before the township this evening, that we only have 38 parking stalls, so we're limited as far as employee traffic can go, and that's really going to be your driving traffic generator for the property.
Okay. And with the, I guess, how the land is and the topography is supposedly, I guess, there's not going to be able to be something that links the people who are parking to the main building? I didn't quite understand. I guess my question is, is ADA, you know, compliant?
The building is ADA compliant, yes.
And how about from getting from the parking lot to the building?
Yes.
Okay. So, what was this stairwell that you all were recommending?
That was from, that was from the parking lot to the sidewalk on the street, which you don't need, because you'd simply proceed down the sidewalk to the driveway and come in, rather than, and it adds more impervious coverage to put in that stairway, and you're probably not going to have a lot of people coming there on the sidewalk, but it's nice to have the sidewalk so that anybody biking or walking can continue on down Schoolhouse Road to, you know, commercial and, and, you know, restaurants or whatever, if they happen to be walking. But I don't think it's going to be critical to put stairs connecting it to the parking lot, or a switchback ramp for handicap accessibility. Somebody would just drive into the parking lot, and then the building is handicap accessible.
So, I'm just picturing, I, I worked in a school for 25 years, and when we'd have fire drills, and everybody would have to, like, leave, you know, let's leave the property, how would somebody who's ADA, you know, who's in a wheelchair, for example, how would they leave and get to the sidewalk?
Wouldn't necessarily say that they'd have to get to the sidewalk. I would assume that any operator of the facility would come up with an emergency management plan, they've had dedicated meeting areas, and would likely be in the parking lot-
Yeah.
Adjacent to the building.
Yeah, most, most buildings and office buildings muster points are in the parking lot. Security needs to account for people, they don't want them out on the sidewalk.
I noticed on the plans, there was an emergency spillway that was 25 feet wide. Could you tell me what that was for?
Sure. The New Jersey BMP requires us to model an emergency overflow, so should there be a failure of infiltration and then a failure of the outlet control structure, this is a third factor of safety, so that if the basin was full, it could then slowly go over the top and continue on its way.
So, was that for one basin?
Every basin has to have an overflow spillway.
Okay. All right. Thank you. in the plans, I, I forget which, I think this is the environmental impact, it said "The proposed warehouse facility will provide multiple points of access from Schoolhouse Road for emergency police and fire services." And I know that was being discussed here, so it sounds like that really, I mean, that's in the report, but it sounds like that hasn't really been, I guess, completed. You all are still figuring that out, right?
No, I, I think we made it clear that we can provide multiple access points to the site. The board can decide whether they want multiple access points or just one. The board can decide whether they want the fire lane or no fire lane. So, we can provide all of those things, but as Mr. O'Brien said, there are considerations that the board has that may want, they may want to eliminate, A, the fire lane, or B, the access point, or both.
And just real quickly, is, when it gets to the point of building permit review, there's a, a number of different codes that they're going to have to comply with, that all buildings need to comply with in terms of ADA access as well as emergency egress. So, they're going to go a very detailed review of the width of the doors and the location of the doors and the exit signs and all of those things that they're going to have to comply with. And then, on an ongoing basis, we have an entire department, fire prevention department, that does, that does, I think, biannual reviews of, goes, they go around to make sure that all the warehouses and office buildings and multifamily still comply with those.
Thanks, Mr. Healy. Pollution problems. Now, it's mentioned here that the existing air quality surrounding the site is typical of an industrial corridor. I'm wondering if you all have measured that? It just sounds like it's, you know, there wasn't any studies done on that.
There is not a site-specific study. That comment is more as an investigation of the uses around the area.
Okay. And is that, you, that never, you all don't, never, don't require that, that that's investigated more, the, the council?
No, I mean, I think the uses around there are all very similar, and they're all business and industry zoned. There's not an, an exceptional characteristic about this application particularly that would say, you know, it's going to pollute more than others or out of character for the type of use that it is. You know, if it, if you had a 100-foot smokestack that was belching something out, that'd be different, but we all know kind of what mixed-use industrial outputs, which is actually quite little. You're mostly, it, it's the trucks that come in and off-site, and that's why we require the anti-idling signs and things of that nature. It's really not the use itself that generates pollution.
Thank you, Mr. Orsini. And I'm thinking about, again, the cumulative effect of all the warehouses that are going to be in that area, and that's where we do our shopping. There's a shopping center that's right across the way on one side, there's a shopping center on the other side.
And think of all the trucks that go into those shopping centers. So, I mean, I don't know that you would be able to make much of a case that this was going to be any different than that.
So, there's more trucks, you're saying, that go into shopping centers than go into-
Yeah, how do they, how do they get deliveries? I mean, ShopRite, how many trucks a day does ShopRite have? I don't know if anybody knows, but that's a lot. So, if you're not gagging from that, you're not going to gag from this.
I could be gagging from that. I don't know.
You could be, but we can't, we can't, I mean, we can't, we, we just, we're not going to measure it, and we don't, it's not a use that's going to generate anything that's abnormal. I mean, you could say this about almost anything.
Right. But there's quite a few residential neighborhoods, you know, around that area, so it's probably something maybe that needs to be looked at, so other communities-
So, it's really hard to measure that, number one. Number two, I mean, this is, as was stated in Mr. Healy's report, 500 feet away from the nearest residence. And I mean, that's kind of what the ordinance that you referred to earlier was driving at, and so this wouldn't even come under that, because it's 500 point and 500 feet.
Right. But it's, it's a cumulative effect that all these warehouses in one location are, are having on the environment. So, that, that's where I was going with that. So, you mentioned in the application, the impact of the proposed project, its increased economic growth and does not have an effect on the projected costs associated with the provision of municipal and education services. How many people do you think this project's going to employ? When you talk about the econo, you know, economic impact that there's going to be growth.
Yes, that line is, is always summarized for the township, because residential developments impact the township from the school board of ed and making sure that they have money for the kids that will come along with residential projects. Industrial projects are self-sufficient and do not have nearly as great of an impact on municipal services. Trash hall is all private, landscaping maintenance is private, snow removal on the site is private. So, really, the, the only necessities that come around once in a while are the, the fire and, and police on their inspections biannually. So, that's why that note is in there when it comes to impact to the township financially in regards to how many people will be hired. Because it's speculative, it's difficult, but, and truck court, 10 truck positions, and then, you know, 38 parking spaces.
So, people will be employed in the building as well, besides the trucks?
Yes.
You going to say something? No? Okay. And I would imagine that we're going to draw in people maybe from other communities, taking jobs here and filling those job positions, you know, as warehouse workers and all, which could lead to impact on the school system and on the housing community. And I, I know that's not your job, but just something for the council to think about that, you know, these, all these warehouses are going to need people to employ, and, and these people with the gas prices, these people are going to want to be living in the community. So, even though you all think that there might not be any kind of impact on the government and all, it might actually cause more impact and raise our taxes, but hopefully that won't Destruction of natural resources. In the report for the environmental assessment, it says "The proposed development does not incorporate the destruction of considerable natural resources." And, you know, 600 trees being removed, and, and there, some of them, I, I took pictures on the way over. I mean, some of them are really beautiful, large trees, especially the, the ones that I think are on the it down. The one that's-
Get it up for you.
Thank you.
It turns off automatically after a few minutes.
I know that when I, I drove by it this evening, on the Easterling portion, it seems like there's a lot of trees over there and also in the, in the back of the property. Are there any trees that could, I mean, does all the 600 trees have to be torn down? Are there any trees that could, I mean, does all the 600 trees have to be torn down?
Can you, can you use my, oh, get it to work? Is it?
Unfortunately, a large majority of the trees will have to come down with the redevelopment of the property due to grading, demolition and new construction.
Okay. So what would you, so here it says that the proposed development does not incorporate the destruction of considerable natural resources. What would be, you know, a considerable amount of resources then?
Considerable natural resources, a lot of times includes steep slopes, wetlands, um, environmentally restrained areas such as floodplains. Uh, this is a localized pocket of woods from an undeveloped area. The ordinance allows development up to 60% impervious coverage. It allows the clearing of trees. Uh, it has a specific ordinance for that. So the key word in there is considerable. Natural resources are protected through other various aspects of the state. We have the Freshwater Wetlands Act and the Flood Hazard Area Control Act. And in those different areas, they are, uh, protective of certain critical items.
And I, I would further point out that, well, if you don't have to raise the grade as much, you probably can perhaps save some, like what the question I asked earlier.
That's correct.
Was all the trees on the north side that would have to go. Um, you know, there may, there may be a way to, to save more, but that's why we have the tree ordinance. And so the applicant has agreed to replace more trees on site. We don't have a specific number, but they agreed to more. They have no landscaping on the eastern side, so they're going to put that in. And then the remainder, they contribute to the Shade Tree Commission, um, who then plants trees, um, parks in open space and public areas. So that's, that's the mitigation that we legally have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Arseni. And, and one recommendation, recommendation that I would have with all these tree replacements, since there's so many warehouses over on that portion of town, trees help with the air pollution and help those kinds of circumstances. So I think it's great that there's a tree fund. However, it would be nice to have those replaced over in our portion of town since so many of those trees are being torn down.
Well, what I would suggest you do is go to the next meeting, the Shade Tree Commission, and make that recommendation.
I have. Yes, yes, I, I have. And, and you know, there's, I want to say, there's a lot of money in that fund. I don't think there's been, um, a lot of trees replaced.
To definitely take it up with them. I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you that, I mean, I wrote the ordinance when I was chair of Shade Tree Commission, so that's why we're getting the money in the first place. So I'm, I'm all for spending it in the break.
Okay. Well, it's an awesome ordinance. Thank you for creating it. Um, displacement of people in business. So when you're building this warehouse and it's going to be on Schoolhouse Road and that's a major, you know, the school buses go down that road, the people who drive to the drugstores and the grocery stores go down that road, the people who need their caffeine in the morning.
Okay, so now we're getting a little far off. So I've given you at least 20 minutes now.
Thank you.
And, and you've got to wrap it up. Um, we, we, we've already heard traffic testimony. What you're saying is true of any portion in town, um, any road in town, any place in town. And I, I don't think we need sort of to continue down.
You didn't, let me finish that question, Mr. Arseni.
Okay, I'll let you finish that question.
Thank you so much. The question was, is how long will businesses and people be displaced while the building is going on? Is that okay question?
That's an okay question.
Thank you.
The answer is, nobody will be displaced. The existing building will be torn down. When the new construction takes place, all of the staging will be on the property.
Great.
It will be on the site, so there will be free flow of traffic on Schoolhouse Road so that the buses, other vehicles, uh, can get through, so there is no displacement or disruption.
That's great to hear. I'm, I'm picturing streets closed off and all, so that was, that was important to me, Mr. Arseni.
Okay.
So thank you for allowing that question. And, um, on my last sheet, so thank you for so much time you've given me. I do have a lot of questions. I study these plans and I appreciate you giving me time.
Well, I, I would, I would commend you for actually asking questions about the plan, which is why I've let you go for 20 minutes, because so far they're all generally reasonable questions that pertain to the plan. So that's what we like to hear.
Thank you. Um, so it says, um, "Being the proposed development generally complies with the requirements of the ordinance and the proposed warehouse facility is permitted in the zone, there are no alternative costs or social impacts to discuss. If the property was to be developed by a different applicant, it would most certainly propose a similar use in site design as which is currently being proposed." And you mentioned in the conclusion that it's a suitable addition to the surrounding developments as well as the local community. Can you tell me, um, how it's an addition to the local community since you really don't know what's going to be in there?
Permitting use within the zone complies with the zoning ordinance and master plan, so I believe that that statement is, is true and valid.
Okay. It would, because I'm, I'm figuring it's going to help, you know, that the community, I'm looking at the community as people in the community, so I was just wondering. So I was reading it a little bit, little bit differently. Um, thank you for letting me talk. Um, as you know, we're overburdened with all these warehouses. I'm sure you're, you guys build a wonderful warehouse. Um, we have a lot of empty warehouses and I hope that I'm not back up here in a year saying, "Look at all these empty warehouses and look what you've done to our community."
Actually, we, I would dispute that. We have very, I would say no empty warehouses in town. What we have is empty office buildings. And that, what we addressed, like for example, two weeks ago, when we had far more outcry, which puzzles me, is the demolition of four buildings that weren't being used and the building of one that will be. Um, I don't know that there's too many vacant warehouses. They go up, they, everybody wants their Amazon tomorrow. And, um, I doubt very too many people in this room are that different. If you don't shop online and you don't subscribe and you don't click that button, congratulations.
Well, I, I hope you're right, um, because I have Juan Wiley Drive, March 2023. It's a 350,000 square foot warehouse. 401 Cotton Tail, October 2022, a 999, 714 square foot warehouse. 110 Belmont Drive, 152,000 warehouse, ready in May 23. 244 Belmont Drive, 198,000 square foot warehouse.
Mr. Chairman, now not relevant to this particular application, but you can come and talk about all of them if you want.
Well, it was relevant to your, what you stated. You said that there's no
Well, nothing that has been built. You're talking about ones that we haven't even heard yet.
A lot of those are under construction.
Right. That's, yeah, no, they're all under, I said the dates, May 2023. I mean, it's not May 2023.
Well, of course, it's not going to be occupied if it's not built. So I, I'm not getting why you're reading a litany of things that aren't built yet. If it's built and it sits there for a year and it's unoccupied, you might have a point.
That's, that's
But we don't have that.
That's why I said in a year from now, hopefully I'm not saying, you know, that you were wrong about the warehouses, because we have a lot of warehouses that are being built and, um, I just don't think it's an advantage to our community.
Nobody, nobody builds to lose money. So, um, you know, I'd rather see warehouses being used than office buildings that aren't. And we have a lot of, these applications have adaptive reuse of existing sites, which we encourage in the master plan.
Virtually every address or application that she mentioned involves a vacant building. I don't remember an approval here or with the zoning board in the recent past that hasn't involved tearing down a building that's not being used. And very few, uh, virgin sites of land that have been used up. And then any of this beats, not any of this, but a lot of it beats, uh, like that four-building project a couple of weeks ago that's been sitting there empty for how many years? And the Liberty Mutual Office Building on Campus Drive, a four or five-story building that's been empty also. Uh, we've set this side, land aside for these uses. So we're not ruining anything by approving uses that are approved for that zone. I don't get the, uh, the issue.
Was 401 Cotton House, Cotton Tail, was that, um, on empty land or was that on a building? Did that have a building already?
I'm not sure at, at, for that specific one, but I remember that I, it struck me, as you mentioned, the addresses, but are you going to pick one that was empty? I'm sure there might have been. But, uh, one behind ShopRite that's being built is probably an empty, was probably an empty lot. Uh, we have lots, that's, that's one of the reasons these, uh, facilities are here to build, because we're one of the few towns, uh, in central Jersey that have the land and the, and the, uh, space to do these things on. Although if you read the paper, you'll see that there's the same kind of action going on in Hillsborough right now, the same kind of controversy and public discussion. So Franklin is not alone.
That, that's, that's true. No, thank you, Mr. Thomas. It's back in 2004, the master plan said that there's going to be some, um, that the community, the, the people and the warehouses are not going to be getting along together. And I guess it might be easier for you to empathize if you lived in that area where you see all the warehouses. I moved here a year ago and I had no idea it was warehouse heaven over there. And, um, so it's quite concerning and I want to thank you all for, you know, I'm grateful that we have that new ordinance in place, because they wouldn't have put that new ordinance in place in New Jersey, wouldn't have had a whole set of regulations that they recommended if they thought that warehouses should be put all over the place. But definitely in our neighborhood, I mean, if you look on a, on a map, our neighborhood is inundated with warehouses, maybe spread it to other areas around and, and maybe the communities around there will be happier. But I, I know, I mean, I found it afterwards that our community was put there afterwards, but then things should have been really resituated so that, you know, we wouldn't have so many warehouses. I mean, maybe you all will feel bad if, God forbid, somebody gets hurt by a truck accident. I mean, it's, it's senior citizens driving on these roads with trucks. I'm going to stop. Thank you so much, Mr. Arseni.
Senior citizens have other, in, in that area and all the other projects do have alternate routes. They don't have to drive past every warehouse. And in, at every zone, there's a border. One zone ends, another begins. You know, you're talking about it in your neighborhood, there's 70,000 people in Franklin, and this project benefits probably 69,000 of them. And we have the total picture to look at.
All right. Why don't we, why don't we, we do have somebody else, so why don't we disengage and, and, and I think we've answered all the questions, so.
Mr. Arseni, I'm going to sit down, but can you tell me which way I can drive down Schoolhouse to the grocery store? Because I'm not sure.
Any way you want.
Okay. But you'd have to go buy, you know, all the trucks.
I answered any way you want. Literally, not sarcastic, I'm true. Next.
Hi, Terry Thorson, 18 Lebed Drive, Somerset. Uh, I have several questions. One is, have you received the Delaware, Raritan Canal Commission approval?
You cannot get Delaware, Raritan Canal Commission approval until after you get municipal approval and county approval. They are the last agency to approve the application. We have submitted to DRCC. They've reviewed the application. They've had some minor comments with respect to the application, which we'll, will address and we will be getting it, but we can't get it until after municipal action.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, because I saw it in the application, that it was like pending and I was, I didn't know when that took effect.
The, the, the rules on, the commission's rules are they cannot issue their final approval until after Franklin Township and the County Act. And then they, they act, they'll send a letter saying your plans are fine, but they cannot give you the approval.
That makes you spend a lot of money and then, uh, they can shoot it down at the end. That doesn't seem fair.
No, they review the plans and that, they'll tell you your plans are fine, but they cannot issue the certificate of approval until after municipal act and county action.
Okay, and I'm assuming that the illumination, that the lights are going to shine down?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Where's my number three here? It wore my glasses. Um, okay. Uh, you're going to have anti-idling, idling signs inside in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and for the, and a handicap sign, because you're going to have handicap parking. Um, there was one thing I was a little confused about. If you took the sidewalk, if somebody, and you wanted to get in, you said something about you had to walk on the driveway?
Yes.
That doesn't seem too safe. You're going to have trucks going in and out and cars going in and out and you're having people come off the sidewalk and walk on the driveway. Maybe, maybe a little path through the trees or something.
Well, what, what they were saying is because of the, the fact that, so this is contingent on a couple of things, and it's a great question. Um, if they don't have to raise the building because they do these water tests, then that issue may go away. Um, what I was, what I was concerned with was that it, it's probably, you're not probably going to get a lot of pass-by pedestrian traffic that's going to visit this warehouse, right? Different use than a Dunkin' Donuts or a restaurant where people could walk on the sidewalk and go in the building. You're not really going to do that. You're going to drive here. Uh, and if you're a truck, you, you, you're, you're obviously great. So I was, I was thinking that it's more important to have the connections along Schoolhouse Road for bicyclists and pedestrians going past the warehouse than necessarily going into it. And then I don't want to do anything else that we don't have to do to increase impervious coverage by building stairs and ramps from a sidewalk that's not likely to be used by people actually accessing the site. So that was my thinking.
Though, I was very interested that sidewalk was proposed, since in the last planning board meeting, uh, sidewalks were mentioned also. And it looks like maybe sidewalks will be along, um, Schoolhouse, which would be great.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal. I mean, we, we, we did ask the last applicant to put in sidewalks and they agreed, so, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's
If it doesn't interfere with the trees. You also said something about bicycles. You can't, you can't ride a bicycle on sidewalk. Okay, yeah, I'll go really fast. Um, charging stations, you said there were going to be one? What's it like to retrofit? Because I think, um, General Motors or somebody says that like by 2030, 40% of their output's going to be electric cars.
Point is, it's always easier to put in the wiring at the time of construction.
Yeah.
Even if you don't put in the, the charging stations immediately. And there's actually state law which provides for, um, gradually adding stations over a six-year period.
Um, in part of the application, it said it would generate local commerce. If this can be a warehouse that's storing things, how is that local commerce? It seems to, everybody keeps talking about access to 287.
Well, the local commerce is, is people who work there, who will go to ShopRite, who will go to Dunkin' Donuts, who will go to other places and avail themselves of the local businesses.
Okay. I, I didn't interpret it that way. Um, this is kind of a question. I read somewhere, I think in your application, about the type of mulch you're going to be using? And it said pelletized mulch, which is basically compressed sawdust that dissolves in rain. So I would suggest you get regular mulch, because then it would last a lot longer for you. Uh, color of the building? I agree. Gray with blue seems to be a uniform. And everybody keeps saying it's a, it's a neutral color. It's not a neutral color out in nature. Um, it, it's kind of like, if I want to sell my house, I paint everything inside gray. Uh, the other thing is, I, I love the way you said virgin land, because everybody keeps talking about undeveloped land, which implies that it needs to be developed. And not all virgin land needs to be developed. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear I'll sit in?
No, no. No, well, it depends on what you, what you ask, but not, not initially. We just need your name and address, please.
All right. Shirley Tallman, 57 Tallman Lane, our canal walk. And I just want to begin with, uh, I'm not going to be up here as long as, um, Jan was able to, because I hiked six miles today and I'm really tired. Matter of fact, I was just outside of Chester. What a refreshing community. No 18-wheelers in Chester. It's gorgeous. Wouldn't it be nice?
Ma'am, do you have a question about this application?
Well, I'm
We don't need to editorialize.
Yeah.
Just please get to the question.
I do. I think somebody did enjoy the comment, Mr. Arseni.
Well, let's
And it wasn't sarcastic.
Let's be respectful to just ask about the application, please.
Respectful. You better believe it. I'm going to be respectful.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm going to open with just a statement, because it is our mantra. Okay? Citizen Warehouse Action Group, and I
Excuse me, do you have a question about this application?
I do. I do.
And can you ask it, please?
I do. I do. I have several. The first, may I, may I just make a statement?
It's not a statement. It's questions with regard to the application.
You cannot make a statement. That was for the other public.
That was for the other public portion.
Okay, not a problem. My first question, I think, I better turn a little bit. My first question, sir, you're the planner, right? And you talked at length about the fire lane. Is that correct? The, the wisdom in the fire lane? Because I was really trying to understand what you were saying.
Okay.
Okay. And you were saying that maybe the fire lane should have been traded for what?
Open space.
Open space. And you have no concerns about egress or ingress of any fire equipment? Should it be needed without the fire lane, right?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Now, I guess the question then is also impervious ground. I've heard it so many times, not just with your application, but many applications. And the question is this. Am I looking at this correctly? Or do you have alternatives? Like making the warehouse a bit smaller to take care of things like fire lanes? Rather than saying, you know, we can, we don't need the fire lane and we can, we need a variance for more impervious ground. See where I'm going with this? Could you make the warehouse a little smaller and achieve less impervious ground? That's my question.
Mr. Chairman, this was all testified to by various witnesses. We indicated that the fire lane is not a code requirement that we put it there because it was requested. We don't have to do it and that's why we are seeking the impervious coverage variance. The building does not drive the impervious coverage. The building is at 32% coverage where we're allowed to be at 50% coverage. So I, I think that question has been asked and answered by two professionals.
I would agree.
Sir, I don't, I don't think he answered my question because he.
No, he most certainly did. Not only that, 90,000 square feet was the original proposal. 74,000 square feet, a little plus, is the current proposal. Your questions were entirely answered multiple times.
Seventy-four, what, 74?
Uh huh.
Eight-four.
Seventy.
What if, what if we went to 64? Would that take care of all of those issues listed above?
No. It, we, we actually are taking care of the issues in, in the current application. We've, we've, we've listed two recommendations that the, that the board is in favor of to make this a conforming application with regard to the impervious coverage. So I don't see the issue.
Okay. The reason that I am belaboring the point is that the fire department, who answers calls, was shocked, shocked to hear how many warehouses are going to be boxing into now walk.
Do you represent the fire department? Or, or are you associated with the fire department?
No, I'm relating something to you.
No, no, you're not. That's hearsay.
Yes, I am. No, it isn't. I spoke with them.
No, it's hearsay. On, no, no, won't allow it, sorry. Unless John House is here to testify, you're not giving me fire testimony. Sorry.
Well, I'm wondering why he's not here. What would be, would that be helpful?
Because he gave, he gave a report and, and the, the applicant met with him. The applicant meets with all of the staff and they meet with him during the course of an application and he issues a report which we're acting on. So unless you want to join the fire department, I want to hear it.
And he, let's not be sarcastic, okay?
We're not going to be sarcastic because it's 9:30 and the questions you're asking are frankly, just don't make any sense.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you would allow me to tell you that I have spoken directly with five fire truck drivers who came to an emergency two doors down from my home.
I'm going.
Okay, you're relevant to this application. We're not taking testimony about fire from this applica-
Shocked.
No, no, you're not, you're not a fire expert.
They don't want to be blocked in by 18-wheelers when they're trying to get to a fire. Okay, enough said about that. Enough said about that. My next question is have you addressed any of these issues concerning bicycles with the many bicycle clubs in Franklin Township? Have you asked their opinion?
No, there's no requirement for us to do so. But why, why would we go to bicycle clubs?
Well, why are we mentioning in these meetings that we're adding racks, we're adding bike lanes, we're, you know, and adding 18-wheelers?
The Environmental Commission recommends bike racks for employees who might commute to the building by bicycle, thereby sparing the planet more CO2.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, but if they have to duel with 18-wheelers, they're not going to be very encouraged to do so. Also, I'm wondering if this group of gentlemen, these experts here are aware, because we've said it before, that this warehouse is going to be within, what, a mile? Is that a fair statement? Of 4,000 residents and a school of young children? And we don't have, correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be wrong on this one, but I don't think that we have an up-to-date air study. Am I wrong, Ms. Dorsey?
We would not ever, I don't ever recall in the 20-plus years on the planning board us doing an air study for any, for any application or in general.
Ever.
Ever, yeah.
Really? Well, I would highly recommend with my tax dollars that we do that, and I'll tell you why. And we've said it before. We're talking seniors, children, developing children, and we don't know where we're at.
Okay, that's not unique to this application. So if you wanted to make sort of a, a general comment to that regard, and that's certainly, you know, a reasonable comment, I would just have done it in the general public planning portion, saying, look, we have all these uses. Do we really want to take a baseline air quality of the township? I, I think that's reasonable and it probably actually is a question that you could more ask of counsel that would spend the money to do that.
I believe we did. I believe we did and we're still waiting for an answer.
Okay.
Okay, so I want that to be a matter of record. Okay, let's see, what else? And I will wrap it up here and I appreciate your patience because as you know, we're not experts. We're residents, concerned residents. You, Mr. Dorsey, you said something very interesting. It caught my attention when you used Amazon as the example. They set the, the record, if you will, or the stage, if you will, for warehouses.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, I think you're on record. I've heard you.
No, well, then your record, your recollection of the record is entirely correct. What I said was, we don't have vacant warehouses. And if you use Amazon and if you want things the next day, that creates the demand for warehouses in general. That's what I said.
You used the name Amazon in a little different way, but I won't debate it with you any further.
That's good.
But I would like to tell you that I know for a fact, because employment was raised as a, an argument, if you will, for these warehouses. Employment, increased employment. Are you aware that Amazon lays its employees off?
Okay, we, first of all, we don't know that this warehouse is going to be Amazon, so we're not.
No, but you used it as the setting of the standard. You set the standard.
No, 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 I didn't. Can we, can we move on?
Yeah, and just let me make one comment. This warehouse is 70,000 square feet. Amazon's warehouses are 600,000, 500,000 square feet. There is one in this community that's 614,000 square feet. You'll never see an Amazon in this building.
Do we have any indication, sir, based on the, the company that is building this, paying for this, what their business is?
Their business is building warehouses.
Okay. And they have nothing at all to do with online ordering or there's, I mean, they're strictly a developer. I know it's not Link. Okay, I know that, but I'm just asking.
Okay, again, the, who occupies the warehouse is irrelevant. It is a warehouse. The testimony was that it is a spec warehouse, that they don't have a tenant. It's a warehouse. It's irrelevant to the planning, what exactly is going to be used there. Whether it's widgets or wikis, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's, it's just, we can't go there. I mean, you're asking those questions that
No, I'm not.
can't be considered in terms of this application legally from the New Jersey State Planning Law. And you're just going down avenues that we can't legally consider, even if we wish to, and.
Okay, all right, I respect that. But I will say to you that if it is seasonal, as is Amazon, should it be seasonal?
Amazon isn't seasonal.
Oh, it is.
7365.
There are ten loading docks in this warehouse.
No, it's not seasonal. What do you think? It's the Christmas shop? Come on.
They were as low as 14% capacity. I went in there and met with them. 14% of capacity, not that long ago, Ms. Dorsey. Have you visited them and talked to them?
No, because it's irrelevant. That, I mean, they built it, they operate it. If they lose money, it's a, it's a business. The planning board can't dictate economic outcomes.
It's relevant to the statement that it is a plus. This warehouse is a plus because it's going to bring employment in.
Well, nobody, nobody builds these things at great expense to lose money.
I think I've already stated in this forum that there is a benefit to having an empty warehouse financially and a benefit to have an, a warehouse that is operating under capacity financially.
Okay, but we as a planning board can't even consider that when we consider the application. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I can't say if there's four gas stations on a corner and you want to build a, a fifth down the road, geez, there's too many gas stations. Just one of these is going to go out of business. The planning board cannot dictate that. The only way you can dictate that is by zoning. So don't zone it for a gas station if you don't want six gas stations in the area. That's the way you control it.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey, because this never should have been zoned for warehouses when within a mile, a mile, you are boxing in at least 4,000-plus residents, seniors, and you are also boxing in school buses on Schoolhouse Summerfield. You know how many school buses come down there in the mornings? And how many trips, young man, did you say there would be?
Thirty.
Enough said on that subject. Enough said on that subject. Just a couple of days ago, there was a call made, it's a matter of record, to the police department, the Franklin Township Police Department. We had, no, this is a question, young man.
Okay.
We had an obnoxious, dangerous situation. It's happened before. And it was at the intersection of Metlers and Weston. And the details are all a matter of record. The response from the, is it a sergeant who was in charge? I didn't ask her if she was a sergeant, but she would have been on the nine o'clock shift.
Okay, can you ask the question?
They couldn't respond. They couldn't respond due to lack of police officers. Now, here's my question. Read it.
What does that have to do with the application?
I'm getting to the question.
Well, please do.
With the tax base that's coming in, that I think you mentioned, somebody mentioned that's, you did, young man, that that's a, that is a plus, the tax base, right?
He was the young man.
Oh, the mature gentleman.
Shirley, you lied to me. You said you weren't going to go on as long as Jan and Ben. You are, you are challenging, boy, you're challenging.
This is important, though. This is important.
I'll figure that out as soon as you ask the question.
Well, let the senior gentleman answer this then, or you can help him. With the new tax base, do you think that Franklin Township should put more officers on the street?
Irrelevant. No, 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 don't, don't.
Okay, then will they put more officers?
Ask counsel. Ask counsel, Shirley.
All right, counsel, will.
Ask counsel. Ask counsel. Do we look like counsel with a planning board? Go to a different meeting.
Oh, I think you all care. I know you care. I know that Ted.
Do you have a question?
I know that Ted Chase cares and I know that Robert Thomas cares.
And I care too, but I also care about wasting this board's time, which now you're doing. And that's what's ticking me off. So do you have any more questions or can we move on?
It's not my intent to waste time.
Well.
Okay, and I did.
I've wasted probably about 90% of my lot of time.
And I did say, I did say at start that I walked six miles today in Chester where there are no 18-wheelers, young man.
Fantastic. Go to Chester then.
I can't afford it. I don't know how some people in this room can.
Well, then don't cite it as your halcyon community.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Dorsey.
Have we had a motion to close to the public?
Why don't we say it to the general?
Is, motion to close, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter.
I, I guess we are left with issues that unfortunately I put in your hands. We came in here tonight seeking variances basically because of the fire lane. And we've presented evidence in support of those variances. We've also presented testimony that we think that this site will work and function without the fire lane and without the driveway or the driveway can stay. That's up to the board. But I, the application could have been submitted with zero variances but for, or the minimum variance but for the fire lane. We tried to accommodate the fire official. Mr. O'Brien justified the variance if the board were inclined to grant the variance. Again, if the board felt that the fire lane was not necessary, we can get it down to 61%. And if we eliminated the other part of the driveway, we can get it under 60%. So I, it, it's up to the board whether they want the fire lane. I think the truck turning court, we've dealt with and I'm not going to waste the porch time going over that testimony. And again, the rest of the plan is, is pretty straightforward, pretty clean and pretty conservative in size compared to what this board has seen over the last few months. And I would respectfully request the site plan approval either with the variance or without the variances.
Thank you, Peter. Is there any other board discussion on this application?
Yeah, first of all, I want to forget the discussion about a connection from the sidewalk to the building. This isn't a business that attracts walk-in customers. You know, the, the sidewalk is there for the general public to use. Anybody who uses that facility is going to walk in, going to drive in in a car. 99.9% of the people that go to that facility will drive in in a car or a truck. So eliminate that. As far as I'm concerned, you can eliminate the driveway and the fire lane. They've shown it can be protected from fire without it. Get rid of all the impervious coverage and there's no issue with that at all. As far as the variance for the 130 feet, I'm not even sure why we have an ordinance anymore that says 147 feet are required because everybody comes in and proves they don't need it. Maybe we need to look at that. Third thing is, as this was a couple of weeks ago, it's a conforming permitted application in a proper zone. You drive by that site today, you see a rundown property with junk lying around all over the place, an abandoned house in the back. This facility will be an improvement. As long as we can get the signs up to get the truck drivers going in the right direction. This is, this is where you want a warehouse if you, if we're going to have them. And we are going to have them whether we like them or dislike them. They're a legitimate legal use and quite possibly maybe some of the economic benefit that they are contributing to the town are the property taxes that they pay. There's certainly going to be more taxes from this facility than are coming from what is there now. As far as measuring air quality, like you said, maybe that's a community thing that needs to be done. Counsel makes, needs to make that decision. But I've been here 50 years in this town. There's never been an air quality measurement taken anywhere. We did have one person who wanted us to measure the reflection of the lights at night off the grass of a soccer field that was being proposed, but that was never done either. I, I just don't understand. It's, it's the proper zone and it's a, it's a proper use for the site and it is a big improvement. This will be, by the way, the third sidewalk in that section. So we're getting. This will be, by the way, the third sidewalk in that section, so we're getting to where there's actually going to be soon maybe a real connection.
Thanks, Bob. Ted?
I have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Thomas about the sidewalk from the building out to the sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road. The point of the sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road, as well as that, and that from a building to that sidewalk, is that if any employees in their lunch hour wanted to walk up to the businesses at the corner of Schoolhouse and Elizabeth, that they'd be able to do so safely. However, my hope is that after reexamination of the groundwater level, that the building will not be 10 feet in the air, 10 feet above the general grade level, which no other building in the area is, and that therefore it will be reasonably easy to connect up to the sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road. It's really not much sidewalk that we're asking for, and if a truck can drive up the slope that you're proposing to have, I think a person can walk up a sidewalk alongside that slope.
So let me ask something. If we were to construct a sidewalk, I don't think it's going to probably affect the impervious coverage enough one way or the other, whether you require a variance or not in the end. That's what I thought. However, would you have to make that sidewalk ADA compliant? Would you have to do that ski ramp, the switchback thing?
You would.
Okay.
So we were advising before, you can have an ADA accessible path through a driveway. So if you read the ADAG regs, not PROAG, PROAG is requirements inside of a public right-of-way. On private property, your ADA accessible path can be from the building through the parking lot through the driveway. However, if you propose a sidewalk, it must be ADA compliant. So we testified that we'd be happy to put it in if the board is concerned about it. We're just advising, due to the topographic change, it's going to be a switchback ramp. Mr. Lanfranc just whispered in my ear, if we get rid of the eastern driveway, will I have more room for that sidewalk? And it is true, but it still will have to be a zigzag to get it up to the level.
See, and that's why I come down on the side of you can access the sidewalk through the driveway, because that sidewalk is probably not going to be used by people going to that site. If you're there at the site, you know the driveway's there, and you can get the sidewalk. If it was a use like a Dunkin' Donuts, or any of the uses on Schoolhouse, on the corner of Schoolhouse that we're actually trying to get people to, then I would be more pro this, because you are actually going to have a good chance of somebody coming off the sidewalk to go into your business. Here, that's not the case. So then the question is, is the people in the building know that they can get out, they're not going to run into an 18-wheeler? I assume the sidewalk's going to have striped crossings where the trucks, where the driveway, the one driveway, if it's one, or even both, if it's both, would have a crosswalk in it? So, you know, I would think that you would be able to, anybody coming from the building would know the conditions enough to be able to get out there. That was my thinking, Ted, at least.
Okay, so people can walk out the driveway. Fine.
Okay, if there's no further board discussion, let me see if I can frame a motion that takes into account everything we talked about tonight. So I'll make a motion to approve with the truck court variance, let's not use the word truck court, what's the proper term here? The depth of the loading berth being 130 square, 130 feet. Impervious coverage, to use Jim's suggested language, the board would support the applicant working with fire prevention to eliminate the eastern driveway, and allow, and that the board further believes that it's a better zoning alternative, it meets the C2 criteria that was talked about, and would not impinge upon the ability to actually fight a fire at the location, and to also recommend that one or two spaces be left to access the site through the buffer, I won't say trees, but through the buffer, however, whatever shape it takes, to the adjoining property. Sidewalk, we talked about that.
Trees, more trees.
Oh, trees, yes. So putting...
Mr. Chairman, what I could do is...
You're probably more efficient.
Now we're getting into conditions.
Right, okay.
So with your permission, let me start with the list of conditions, and you can add, subtract, multiply, or divide, whatever, all right? Compliance with Mr. Healy's report dated August 12. Compliance with the CME report dated August 24. Compliance with the Environmental Commission report, except for the solar-ready requirement, and I note for the record that that report includes the anti-idling requirement. That report is dated August 30. Compliance with the fire report of August 18, all right? The applicant will work with the staff to provide additional landscaping, particularly along the eastern and western side yards, and also wherever feasible to add as many additional trees as we can. The applicant will work with Mr. House to explore possible alternatives for fire access that will still permit the elimination of the 15,000 square feet of pavement on the easterly side. Excuse me. The applicant will, if possible, reduce the amount of the fill and the grade of the comment and the grade of the land, if possible, after testing the groundwater level, which testing shall be in the presence of the board's engineer, CME associates. Applicant will furnish revised plans to capture all of the changes that we've made. The applicant will produce a wayfinding sign package satisfactory to the staff. The applicant will arrange to renotify, renotarize the owner's signature.
Thanks, thanks. Peter?
Potentials to be revised to show the office... That was revised plans. That was the comment for revised plans.
Jim, I have no problem with anything you just said. Can we word it in the resolution that the board believes, based on the testimony, that elimination of the eastern driveway and accommodation of access, fire prevention access from the adjoining site, is sufficient based on testimony to accomplish fire prevention? And that represents a better, the board prefers this as a better zoning alternative than granting the impervious coverage variance? I just want to make the language stronger. You can massage that.
I will do that. I took copious notes.
Okay. So with that, with the conditions that Jim read off, I make this motion.
I just had a question in the tree replacement ordinance. Don't we have the option, in the past, the applicant will usually say, we have to replace 50 trees, we're, on our plan, we're showing 25 trees, we'll give the rest money to the... We have an option to require them to, more trees on site and less money?
Yeah, and I think that's what the board is requesting, that they replace as many as possible on site, and they're going to work with staff to replace, again, as many on site as possible, and then to the, whatever is remaining, then the ordinance allows the payment in lieu.
Oh, we just want to make sure that those two sides then have as many trees as physically possible.
And I think they also mentioned the rear as well, the double staggered rows.
I mean, the rear, yeah. Okay.
Yep. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Christine, if you could board.
Carl Hock?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too, Peter. Anything else, Christine, Mark? If not, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.